Good evening and welcome to the July 12, 2021, meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anyone else in the audience recording? Seeing none, we stand for the pledge. While we try to work out some technical problems, listening to all members of the board, I'd like to move up agenda items that don't require a vote. So entertain a motion to move up agenda items 6A, B, C, D, and E.
Shall move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. By a roll call vote of members we can hear.
Mr. Ruffley?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Great. Thank you. Through the chair. So we'll start with the Plastic Bag Reduction Bylaw Implementation Plan. And I'd like to have Darlene Coyle come up and join us as the Director of Development and Inspection Services and our point person on this right now to give you an update per the request of the board, I think a couple of meetings ago, to come back to you tonight.
Hi. Good evening. So thank you very much. So as a follow-up to recent Board of Selectmen meeting for plastic bag reduction.
Excuse me, one second. If we could stop. I just got a text that people on the call can't hear anything?
Okay.
My microphone's not working.
Okay.
Can't hear the recording.
So the public?
I'm trying to get my mic to log in and see what's going on. I don't know how to log into this. So at all the other meetings, the moderator logs in. Does whatever they have to do.
Okay. But can Darlene take a look at it for a second? I'm sorry. Let me just. And Chris, but it is being so people watching us can see it on television. Okay.
They're streaming.
Okay.
No pressure.
I'm just gonna.
Can you hear me on the mic? Okay. Well, it's getting a little bit loud.
Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign.
To enable audio control, please enter your audio PIN followed by the pound or hash sign. If you do not have a PIN, just press pound or hash. This conference will now be recorded.
You back to yours?
We get them out of today.
I can hear you now, Chris.
There we go.
Thank you, Darlene.
All right.
Now, wasn't that good that we brought Darlene up first?
Can you hear me from here? Can anybody hear me from here? The people in the room don't count. Lionel, can you hear me?
I can hear you. I can hear you.
Okay, this, I think we may have fixed it.
All right.
That's all right. Thank you.
That's from the non-technical person, just to let you know. So for the plastic bag reduction bylaw, we have, we are coming back to you to present a implementation plan. So the implementation plan that we have talked about as a group for the Board of Health and the inspectional team, we think that there are several different, several different functions that we're already working on. And we'd like to just give a couple of, a couple of suggestions. So currently, right now, we have, we've worked with the assessor's office to get a listing of all the businesses in town. That business list is being scrubbed. We have about 600-plus businesses. And the list is going through to be able to identify businesses that we definitely know wouldn't be using plastic bags, the ones that would be common, that we know would provide plastic bags, and then working to get a contact list that makes sense to send out to all the businesses. So we're actively doing that right now. We are also working on a frequently, like an FAQ, Frequently Asked Questions document, and a kind of some user-friendly materials that will go in a packet. So our plan is by the end of this month, we are hoping to be able to get a contact business list, get a draft letter out to the businesses to identify that the plastic bag ban that was already passed some time ago has been put on hold reasonably for COVID, and we're going to be moving forward with implementation of it. So kind of puts them at least having knowledge about what, what's going to happen and kind of what the timeline is. In that letter, we're also hoping to be able to identify some resources. So if somebody has, you know, say they have a stock of thin plastic bags of, say, half-mill or, or one-mill, it would give them an idea of being able to, where can I go, what vendors can I go to be able to buy some compliant plastic bags that are going to work with the bylaw. I just want to point out right behind me. So on, on the board, we have, we actually kind of save bags in our office. And we wanted to just kind of give a visual of the different types of bags that you may see. This is just a sampling of what we had. And kind of on the left-hand side, you'll see more of a thinner bag. So 0.5 to 1-mill is the estimate on that. The thicker bags in the middle are going to range from 2 to 2 to 4-mill bags. And then on the upper right-hand corner, we have what people see as reusable bags and a paper bag that would be in compliance with the bylaw, 40% post-consumer content. And it's a recyclable bag. So we wanted to like at least give a visual because we think that we're going to be fielding a lot of calls from businesses. And we thought maybe having some visual aids might be helpful, having a resource of businesses that, for retailers that people will be able to contact to, to get pricing on bags and purchase bags. So we're hoping to be able to put all that in one packet out to the businesses. And being able to field questions because we know once we send out a mailer, that's going to create, you know, a lot of questions, calls to the office, and probably site visits to, to the businesses to try to help them navigate through the bylaw and kind of answer their questions and calm their fears. We also, as part of business outreach, we want to use the time in the next, in the next couple of months to be able to, we have a great connection with the Auburn Chamber of Commerce and the Business Roundtable. So those are meetings that happen regularly. And so we would like to be part of those upcoming meetings to kind of talk about what, what the bylaw is about and what businesses have to do in order to be compliant. So that is something that we have been talking about internally, also trying to figure out some community education. So the business outreach we would see happening through July, August, September. And people, residents in the community are, you know, are going to ask questions about it, too. How does this affect them? When they go to the store, are they going to see the regular bags? What do they need to do? Are they going to be charged for a bag? So those kind of questions are going to come up, too. We want to be able to give information to the community. And we think that we can do that in like a friendly way, obviously by just being here at the town hall and answering questions, but also through some events that we already have planned, some fun events, the concerts on the common and the farmers markets. We already have a presence in the community at those, those type of events. And those are happening from now in, through the summer months. So we are looking at pooling our resources and being able to bring the staff to those events, too, to kind of talk to residents about it. It's kind of like a nice way because people are at a fun event to be able to give education. We do that with other topics around health as well. We are looking at implementation for October. It sounds far away, but actually it's about 10 weeks away. It's not, it's not that far away. And also speaking with the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, we've met recently to, to give them an update as to where we're at. They are supportive. They would obviously like to see it implemented as soon as possible. They also understand that, you know, there's time that it'll take to, to put these, put these actions into place. So that is, I have a target date. We talked about October 1st. But I don't, you know, this is obviously a timeline to present to you to see if you feel like that works for the board, or if you'd like to see it a little bit later, a little bit sooner. I just want to like be realistic about what we are, what we're trying to accomplish and give people enough time to absorb it, be able to ask questions, and then be able to have time to get the bags because there's obviously a cost factor to it. These businesses have to get the right type of bags. And also recognizing, actually, when we were talking about it in our staff meeting, one real thing that we don't know yet, that we are hoping to get information about, there is like a backlog on all different types of things that you're trying to order because of COVID. So we don't know if there's a backlog on bags, quite honestly, because we don't order bags. But we're hoping to be able to get some information when we contact the retailers. And that's, that's something, if we hit a cog like that, obviously I can come back and, and give you an update. But it at least gives you kind of an overview of kind of where we're at.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments?
Yeah, comment, just that I think you hit the nail on the head. I support this, but I don't want to be set in stone to a compliance date because we want to make sure all the businesses know about this so they have time to use up their supplies and then, like you said, order new stuff. And they'll be the ones to tell us if there's a backlog of, you know, of new bags that they have to buy. So I like, I think it's a good plan.
Thank you.
Other members?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes, I, I think this is a great plan. Thank you, Darlene, for, for putting this together. And similar to Mr. Wren's point, I certainly don't want this to be a hard and fast date because, of course, we don't, there's a lot of unknowns. And we, you know, we have had some businesses that have been closed substantial part of last year. And I'm sure, you know, none of us knew how long that was going to last. So, you know, the only thing that I would ask is that, you know, after the, you know, have a soft, you know, potentially a soft deadline of October, and then just see where the businesses are. And I'm sure, you know, you'll work with the businesses in the best interest rather than go to a fine structure right off the bat. So, but I would just wanted to raise that.
Other board members?
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just also want to thank Darlene and her team who are here as well, Colleen and Eileen here. They just do a fabulous job. And I just want to take the opportunity to thank them. Don't get to do that too often personally. So you've done a great job. And, you know, given everything you've had to handle with COVID the last year and a half almost, that you've just been able to keep up with the other non-COVID things is impressive. So thank you for everything you all do. And thank the Board of Health likewise, with everything they've had to do with COVID, to all of a sudden be shifting their efforts to some other things that are, that are very important. But COVID has just taken so much time. So I just want to make sure we thank everybody. Thanks for the chance.
Of course. So I might be in the minority as being the only one that would have hoped to move sooner. But that's probably expected by everyone up here. I do have a question, and that's just, do we have any of these, the information from the packets put together from before? I mean, we were talking about a deadline of April of last year. So I imagine that some list must have been put together of the businesses then, and a lot of this planning in advance. So how much is, can we piggyback from before and how much is getting new information?
The, yes, thank you for the question. So we do have, from the meetings and from kind of the discussion that we had before, we actually do have like a Frequently Asked Question draft that we had kind of molded from the feedback that we had gotten from, from the, from the meetings. So that part, we kind of already had. We'd like to kind of just update it and make sure that we're not missing the mark on anything because it's been a little while since, since this has passed. And we just want to be cognizant, we're not the first town to do this. You know, there's quite a few, quite a few municipalities that have already done it, you know, about half in the state. And we want to learn from, you know, our sisters and brothers around some of the challenge that, challenges that they've already faced. I mean, I think you know our department well enough. We always try to go with education. It's not, it's not something I want to pull out a ticket book. And quite honestly, although we did talk about it in our meetings about the enforcement part of it, to have like a procedure in place for enforcement should we need it, that's like way further down the road that, you know, we want to bring businesses on is through education and, and resources. So.
I just want to point out that when I started doing research for this several years ago now, and then talked to other towns that had done it, enforcement in any of the towns that I talked to had never been used. So to that point, I don't think that it's necessary. I mean, it's something to throw in there, obviously, to, so that the, there is some meaning behind the bylaw. But I think you're right, that that's not really something that we're really too concerned about having to enforce. But sorry, I interrupted you. The only other question I had is the list of businesses, I don't know if there are many other businesses that would be using plastic bags now that wouldn't in April. So do you think that the list is going to expand much, or that most of the businesses will have an idea that this was, was coming already?
I think that, so we're fortunate in the fact that because of, because of our department, we have interactions with businesses already. So we have about a, maybe 120 or so food businesses that we permit already. Those are, that's our easy list. I'm calling it an easy list because we already have those contacts. We already know the managers. We already work with all those people. And we are in and out of those businesses frequently. So that part is part of, say, the 600 or so is, is something that we can kind of target right away. The, the, the rest of the businesses, quite honestly, it's, it's a big list. And the way that it is set up may not be as user-friendly as we would like. So we have to kind of get rid of different, different categories, take out those things, you know, figure out the mailing address may be in like, say, Texas, and it may be under like a, like a company name that you wouldn't recognize, but say Brinker International, I know it's Chili's. You know what I mean? So you have to kind of like, the food ones are easy because I know those. But the ones that I don't know, we're trying to figure out, okay, okay, this business is, you know, 10 Main Street. Oh, okay, it's this one. So it's, it's just a little time consuming trying to figure that part out.
Did the Board of Health reach out to those businesses, I guess, in April or May of, not May, would have been March or April of, of last year, or anytime before that leading up to?
We had not. No, so.
Do board members have any other questions or comments? All right. Seeing none. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to move up agenda item.
Sorry, it's under three.
Yep. Agenda item three.
Make a motion to move up agenda item number three.
A second.
Motion's been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So we are under public hearings and presentations. And we have one presentation by the town clerk on the draft map by the Secretary of the Commonwealth on reprecincting for the 2020 census.
Hello.
Hello. All right. So I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you. So basically, I'm just here, no vote needs to be taken tonight, just to let you know that the map that is up on the screen right now, that is a draft map of the estimated population figures based on the U.S. Census that was done in 2020. It was submitted from the Secretary of State's office to the LEDRC, which is the Local Election Districts Review Committee. And right now, it complies based on how they, they have it set up. It more than likely will stay that way, but it could change. But reprecincting is done every 10 years after the U.S. 2020, after the U.S. Census figures come out. So it was done in 2001, 2010. And then this will go into effect on January 1st of 2022. We should get the final map and the population figures in August or September. And at that time, you will need to take a vote because this is approved at the local level. So right now, what it's showing, it looks like precinct 1, 2, 3, and 4 have changes in them, which you can see a little part of 3 will become 4, a little part of 1 will become 3, a couple roads in 2, that were 4 will become 2. I don't really see any changes in 5 yet, but right now, that is what it's showing. So the population estimated figures have gone up about 700 in the population. And our voting precincts are all in one location.
Board members have any questions or comments? Seeing none. All right. Thank you for coming up.
All right. Thanks.
Make the motion to move up matters G and F.
6F.
6F, excuse me.
And ready. Motion's been made to move up agenda item 6F. Is there a second?
Second.
By a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Berthium?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Agenda 6F is under Town Manager Items. This is the process to change the name for the Auburn Board of Selectmen to Select Board. So with that, I'll turn things over to the Town Manager for an update.
Thanks. Through the chair to the members. This board had asked me to look into the process and had suggested that I contact Senator Moore's office as one of the staff persons in his office had actually gone through the process in her own community as well. And then obviously, it does require legislative change. So I did reach out to Senator Moore's office, but I also reached out to Town Council because I looked back at the charter. And the charter talks about establishing a Board of Selectmen. So the charter, actually all through it, talks about a Board of Selectmen. And I didn't know if the process that had been gone through by other communities would be the same thing here because those other communities may not have had a charter, or they may have had something established differently. So the short of it is that according to Town Council, which is what we expected, we would have to actually have a charter change to change the name. It's not as simple as just having a legislative change. It would need to be done legislatively still, but it has to go through the charter change process. And that's pretty complicated. There are a number of different mechanisms for changing a charter. One involves a charter commission. One involves a charter committee. As a matter of fact, the Town Council had prepared a letter recently for everything that would have to go into that. The only thought was to go through that. There's an outside chance that it wouldn't have to, it would still have to go to the legislature, but it may not have to go back to the voters if the legislature or the Attorney General's Office deemed it to be an insignificant change. But you still have to go through the process to lead up to that. So it's a very lengthy process.
Through the chair.
Good.
They absolutely could. And the other issue is, once you open the charter, you're potentially opening it for other changes as well. So while you're, you may be looking to just make one change, once you open the charter and start with the committee, anything can be raised. So you're potentially putting something off for quite a considerable amount of time. I think I would say that, as you all know, when I send you emails, I've always just said, Madam Chair and the members of the Select Board, Mr. Chairman and members of the Select Board. I think informally, I will continue to call it the Select Board, especially having female members of the Select Board. It just, you know, I never say selectmen. I just always say member of the Select Board. So I think we can continue to do that if the board doesn't want to do this other lengthy process. And it would just be an informal use of the term. But certainly, to change it legally, it would involve a charter change.
Do board members have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Berthium.
First, I just need to say that I can't understand a word that the Town Manager is saying. So I don't know if she needs to not look at you so much and talk into the mic, or if there's just something wrong with her mic. But I literally did not get a word that she said.
Through the chair. Does that work if I pull the mic? Can, can you hear me now, Mr. Berthium?
I can definitely hear you better now.
Okay, great. And Chris Hugo just brought me another device here closer to me. So I'll just try to summarize it. To change the name from Board of Selectmen to Select Board would require a charter change. And to change the Town of Auburn Charter, it does, it would involve a legislative action as well. And there are, I believe, three different ways to change a charter. They all involve legislative action, so it would have to go to the legislature. Most of them also involve not only legislative action, but either having a charter committee, a charter commission, or a, some type of subcommittee that then makes a recommendation, I believe, to town meeting. It depends on the process you follow. It either has to go through town meeting, or it has to go through town meeting and a vote. Then it goes to the legislature. And then the process generally is that it goes back to the town for a ballot question. So it's a really lengthy process to change a charter. And what we're saying is, one of the members asked, you know, what is the process for that? And it, it means that you open up the charter to any potential changes. So my thought was, if the board didn't want to go through this, as you all know, Mr. Berthium, whenever I communicate with you, at least in, in private through emails, I always say, members of the Select Board. I generally put that on all of my correspondence as well. So I've always used it in that format. It's informal, but I believe we're able to do that, but to legally change it. So the legal name is the Select Board. It's a very lengthy, drawn-out process.
Do board members have any questions or comments now? Do board members have any questions or comments now? Seeing none, does the public have a comment?
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. As you know, this was an item that I requested right before leaving office. After researching this item, that is what you just stated, I've learned that this is the only way to change what I consider a non-operational change. As you know, once the, once the charter is opened, it can be considered for any amendment. Once you involve several items, it's difficult to pass a simple change, because some people support one item but not another. As someone who served on a previous Charter Review Commission, I completely support this charter and this form of government. I would not support reopening the charter just for this item, which I consider a non-operational charter. Of course, if the majority of the Board, the members of the Board wish to pursue opening the charter for something other than this issue, that would be, of course, up to you. But I would expect some requests after seeing the process and where it was by motion to be considered, the Board not move forward with this item. And I appreciate the opportunity to be heard on this. Thank you.
Sorry, I was just holding off because there was some, yeah, reverb on that. So thank you, Mrs. Goodrich. That, I saw that Mr. Carpenter unmuted his mic during that. So, Mr. Carpenter, do you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I, I do, only because, and of course, every community, we have 351 in, you know, we have 351 communities in the Commonwealth. But I have been following this for a while, and when this was brought up previously, it was something that I wanted us to work on. I would, I would say that, you know, in the last legislative session, there were at least three or four communities that, that did do, that did, that did make the change. So I, I would like some time to think about it before shelving it entirely and, and seeing what differences might have existed that would allow them to go in a, you know, what appears to be a relatively simple process. But as the Manager says, you know, the devil's in the details, and we may, you know, we may have a stumbling block that the other towns don't. But I have looked at them, and I have seen they use very simple language. And they do, each one that I've seen has referred to a charter. Now, again, you know, I'm certainly no lawyer, and, you know, I do respect the opinion of Town Council. But I, I would like to look at it a little further and, before we close the door entirely.
Thank you. I know the Town Manager wanted to respond to some of that.
Through the Chair, to Mr. Carpenter. I, I know from Mr. Bertham that you couldn't hear when I first spoke of this, so maybe this, maybe I didn't repeat it when I started the second time with the microphone in front of me. So we did look at some other communities. I did talk to Town Council about it. It depends on how the charter was formed and what type of change it is, but all, all of those communities did require legislation. And the legislation required either a vote of their Town Meeting or a vote of the, it was required a ballot question. It depended, again, on how the charter was formed. So my understanding also is that some of those communities that did make that change may have a city council as opposed to a, a, well, not, excuse me, a town council, not a city council, and they were trying to change that name as well. But my understanding is that the couple of examples we looked at, they still had to go through the home rule petition. We got those examples from Senator Moore's office. But because Auburn's charter specifies the establishment of a Board of Selectmen and talks all through the charter about a Board of Selectmen, it requires the charter to be changed. It's not only a home room, home rule petition.
Thank you. Do board members have any questions or comments?
Yes, just one more comment. Ms. Goodrich, thank you for, for jumping in tonight and, and saying what you said. I was really struggling with this one because it was your outgoing, one of your wishes when you, when you were leaving this Board. But I, I think I'd said several meetings ago that I had concerns if it did require charter change, just knowing generally how much that, that really required. So you made my decision on the matter a lot easier. So thank you.
Other members?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bertham?
I, I'm just speaking for myself. You know, according to what the Town Manager said, you know, I think that we can certainly start using the Select Board as, as a address more often, or most often, without, without having to go and change the charter. You know, I certainly have no problem being a member of the Select Board. So that's just my opinion.
Is there anything else? Seeing none, I just wanted to say that I do tend to lean to agree with Mr. Carpenter that if there was any way we could go to the legislature and change this in a simple way, I would support it. And I, I don't know if I want to necessarily kill the idea tonight. I know we've talked about the potential for an administrative change, and there is a, some potential that the Attorney General would see this as an administrative change, at least to my understanding. Uh, and I'll let the Town Manager correct me after this. But I, I don't, I don't know about just scrapping the idea tonight. And we may be in the minority in, in that opinion, and if we are, then that's the decision of the Board. But I just wanted to voice that opinion. And with that, I'll turn it over to the Town Manager.
Through the Chair, I can go back and just double check with Town Council, but my understanding is for it to even get to the point where it's determined to be an administrative change, you still have to follow the process to open the charter. So it, it, my understanding from Town Council, and we also through Senator Moore's office, they are talking to the Senate Council as well, just to see if there was any additional information. But it is our understanding so far that it would still require a charter change here in Auburn because of the wording in our, in our charter, which may not be in somebody else's charter, and somebody else may have a different form of government. So it's my understanding that it would still follow the process, go through the legislature, and then the only thing that may not have to happen is, at that point, there may not be a vote required of the voters at a, at an annual Town Meeting. There may not be a vote. But to get to that point, you still have to file the legislation. And to file the legislation, you still need to either go through the signature process or the committee process. So I don't know that the administrative decision could be made before you probably spend a good year. But that, that's my understanding of it. I'm happy to verify it, happy to just reach out and make sure. That's my understanding. I do have a letter from Town Council on charter changes. It wasn't specific to this, but I can take a look at that and see if there's anything else in there.
Through the Chair, that, I looked at this a little bit too, in terms of charter changes, and that's exactly what I saw, was procedurally, you're pretty far down the road before you, that determination's made, and the committee that's established could opt to bring in other matters, which is not something I'm interested in.
Do other members have any comments?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bertham?
If, if we could possibly, you know, get a couple examples of the other towns that, you know, maybe more recently intend to change, and, and actually find out if, you know, if they had a charter, if they had to change a charter, what they went through, you know, and we could kind of compare the difference between their charter and our charter, or their process and, and what our process would be, you know, it, it might bring forward just how different ours is and why it would be harder to do it. So I, I'd like to, you know, maybe bring them to another meeting. I don't know if we can even get that information. Through the Chair, to the Town Manager, if she thought that that's something that we could get a couple examples, and, and maybe hear it at a different meeting.
Through the Chair, I can look for that. I, I think where it's going to be a little bit more challenging and time-consuming, we'll be going back and finding out how their charters were developed. Uh, because it means going back to the legislature, there are a number of different sites that you have to look at, but you have to look to see if it was done under a Plan A, B, you know, there are many different forms. If it wasn't done under that, was it done under home rule petition? If it wasn't done under home rule petition, was it done under a special act? So those are the, my understanding, those are the three ways. And depending on how the charter was formed and what's in each charter, the process for changing it may change. So we could get, certainly I, I have an example of one community and the legislation that they filed, and it is very simple legislation, as it would be here too. It would probably be less than a paragraph. But it's the process to get through that. I'm sorry, I keep looking over here. I'm, I'm also looking at the screen with Mr. Bertham, so I'm sorry I turned my head. So it's also the, the process that, I'm not sure how much I can get. I'll work on it. I can talk to the Senator's Office and see if they can help out with that kind of research. I'm sure we can get examples of what language they use, but I think what you're trying to say, and I agree, is what was actually the process? And why would the Town of Stoughton be different than the Town of Holden? And why would that be different from the Town of Auburn? I don't know how complicated that is. We can give it a try.
Mr. Bertham, do you have anything else?
No, that's, you know, and, and obviously, I don't want the Town Manager or staff spending days on this. If it's something that we can acquire, you know, quickly with a couple of phone calls or what have you, then, then it would be good information to have. But other than that, you know, I, I kind of already feel that she's explained it well that, you know, it's, it's quite a process for us to change it. So, you know, at, at this point here, I don't think it's a, a voteable thing, but I'm willing to hear more information if more information is available.
How about you, Dan?
Other board members' feelings? I know before it sounded like we weren't really going to go forward with any more information. Now we might. What are everyone's thoughts?
I've, I've heard enough. I think I, I know it lies in the future if, if there's a need to change the charter. I think it'd be a good time to revisit this matter then, to get it in with other matters. But to, to go solely for this change, not to minimize the change, but, you know, I'm not interested at this time.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yeah, I mean, I, I share Mr. Bertham's, you know, I thought that this would be something that the Board could work on as a project. You know, we usually set goals for ourselves. I mean, I'm certainly not averse to digging into some things and, and trying to do something rather than have, you know, the Manager, you know, or Town Staff taken away from something that's a, a priority. This is, this is something we want, you know, just because it's, it's a positive thing for the town. But it's not like it's time-sensitive, you know? And we're, we're not dealing with COVID-19 regulations. There, there's no urgency to get this. It does seem like it is, it is a train that is, much like the plastic bags, it starts off as a bubble and it becomes a movement. And, and it does seem like towns all across the Commonwealth are doing it. But again, the devil's in the details, and I certainly am not saying, do it, don't do it. I just would like to, you know, and I'm willing to look at it if that's something that would be helpful to anybody. You know, I'm sure some of this could be looked at just by looking at press, you know, that local press could give us some information. There's a chapter, the archivist has all of the charters. We can try and look there. I mean, there are things that you can do as an individual, but I'll, I'll leave it up to the Board. I mean, I don't want to belabor the point.
Uh, well, it does sound like the majority of the Board would like to at least keep this on the agenda to learn a little bit more and potentially seek more information from Town Manager and potentially from ourselves, doing our own research. We haven't set this as a goal, but that is something that we could throw on our, our next agenda and put together a subcommittee if that's something you're interested in, Mr. Carpenter. But I, yeah, I don't want to stay on this, this item for forever, but it does sound like it, it's going to continue to the, the next meeting. And then we have some questions that, if it doesn't take up too much of the administration's time, we might be able to get some more, more information on. Is there anything else on this item? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Or to consider moving up the items that the other employees are waiting for. Would you mind doing that? Uh, it would be B, 6B, 6C, and 6D. Right, B, C, and D are all Darlene Coyle and her son.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to move up Agenda Item 6B, 6C, and 6D.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Wren?
Yes.
And the Chair votes yes. It's unanimous. All right, so we're on Agenda Item 6B, and I'll turn it over to the Town Manager.
Thank you so much. And again, I'm going to ask Darlene Coyle to come up and speak to this next item, which is related to a grant.
Hello again. So the, we have, in the past several months, as we have kind of moved through COVID-19 and really kind of what has happened in the past year and a half, there have been some grant opportunities that have come down from Mass Department of Public Health. And a lot of them are happening kind of dynamically in, in response to a lot of the actions that have been taken by health departments across the state. Our health department was fortunate to be able to work with our, some of our central mass towns collaboratively through many processes when it came to sharing resources for COVID-19. And we worked closely with CMRPC, Central Mass Regional Planning Committee. I hope I got all of it there. And they kind of coordinated a lot of the central mass towns in Boards of Health as almost like a liaison through the Department of Public Health. So a lot of the information, we were able to share back and forth in a constructive way in order to be able to share information, share resources, and try to get the word out. As a result of that, and we're not the only ones, it happened all across the state, there have been a number of grants that have come down, and a lot of the grants have very short window. So there's, you know, some of money that either comes from the federal government, down to the state government, down to the locals. So we have been trying to kind of stay abreast of it, talk with our colleagues, and be able to make decisions about how to, how to kind of stay ahead of it. The first grant that I, that I am going to talk about, the Shared Service Grant Application for COVID-19 Investigation and COVID Contact Tracing for COVID. So this is a grant with, shared service means we're going to share service with two other towns. So they had to be a minimum of three towns that applied for this grant. So it's going to be ourselves, Charlton, and Brimfield. Charlton is the host agency, and they have applied to the state with, with the other two towns. And the hope is to cover any, cover any cost for, if we go into another wave of the pandemic this fall, you know, we are, we would have grant money to cover staff to be able to handle the contact tracing and case investigation that goes along with the COVID-19 cases. As a, just a, as a check, Auburn had nearly 1,600 cases of COVID. For several months now, we have had a lot, things have lifted significantly, going along with all of the, the changes from the Governor with the masks and the restrictions. I think in June and July, we had a case each in each month. But total collectively, almost 1,600. had a case each in each month. But total collectively, almost 1,600 cases throughout the pandemic. Very significant, significant amount of time. I can tell you, the Assistant Director, Eileen Alexander, followed those cases. And she was the primary contact to be able to make contact with the person that got COVID, and also the outreach and support for contacts. So we thought that this grant opportunity, again, you can apply for anything, you may not get it. But we figured if we go into the fall with similar situation, we'd like to be able to have some resources. So this grant right now is an application. It's approximately $100,000. The grant is for two years. And again, the, our colleague in the town of Charlton, the health director, has agreed to be the host, and they will hire the people, and we'll work collectively with them to be able to make sure that all of the reporting is done. So this is just a request to you to be able to, if we do get it, fingers crossed, that we would accept those funds and be able to move forward with being involved with the grant.
Do board members have any questions or comments?
Just again, thank you for, this is proactive, this is good. And thank you, Ms. Alexander. That sounds like it was a lot of work, a lot of phone calls. So no, this is great.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yeah, I just had a quick question, and forgive me for probably a question that I should know the answer to. When we say it's a shared grant, so this is going to be, this is going to be, we're, we're hiring additional staff for this effort. And they, they will do this at, in Charlton? That will be where they're located? Or how, how will that work?
Sure, great question. So yes, Charlton, the town of Charlton Board of Health will be hiring the, the staff member for the case investigation and follow through for the COVID-19 cases. We will share that staff member between the three towns, which is why it's called the Shared Service Grant. And that is approximately a two-year grant. You're welcome.
Do other members have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept and expend grant funds up to $100,000 for the Shared Services Grant.
I'll make a motion to accept, or apply for, accept, and expand a grant in the amount of $100,000 from Massachusetts Department of Public Health to support COVID activities required by the Board of Health. The shared towns in the...
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much. And on behalf of the Board of Health and Eileen, we appreciate your support in this.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 6C.
And through, I'm going to turn to Ms. Coyle on this. Thank you. So for this grant application, this may sound familiar to you. I'm happy to say that this is something that we have been doing for years. We have been applying to DEP for a municipal recycling grant. It's a recycling dividends program. So they call it RDP for short. And it's something that, quite honestly, makes us happy. The, the State Department of Public Health, I'm sorry, Department of Environmental Protection offers this grant. And in order to get this grant, you have to agree to commit to some sort of activity that promotes recycling.
They have a long, a very long list of activities that you can commit to. In each point, we're actually applying for 14 points this year, more than we have in the past. It's the most amount that we've applied for. And we're, we're hopeful to get it, but we have to go through the, the review process. There's a lot of educational components to this. Anything that promotes recycling and reduces solid waste is the goal of this grant. So this is something that, as I said in the past, we have applied for year after year. We have put into the application, and the grant amount is 15,400. And if we do get the money, we have to commit to doing those activities. Activities such as making sure we have a certain number of social media posts, making sure, actually, you probably walked by it, we have a sandwich board in the hallway that I move around the town hall and then to other town buildings. It gives you like what you can put in the single stream. It pays for stickers that probably in the past two years, you may have received it. If you are on the solid waste and recycling municipal service, you've got something in the mail that shows you everything that can go into, into the recycling toter. It also tells you what's not allowed to be put into the recycling toter. So it's trying to educate people on, on really how to do this right. We are, oh, yes.
I, pizza boxes, I got yelled at by, I think, Jordan. And, but it did help. And it ended up having the, it opened too much, because I'm such a good recycler.
That's good. No, pizza boxes is, it's, there's been a change just in the past about year and a half. So pizza boxes can be recycled, even if they do have a little bit of grease, as long as they don't have pizza in it. So no food in the pizza boxes, but a little bit of grease is okay. Those are things that we do, yes, we want you to break it down. We want you to put it in the recycling toter. So education is our friend. And it, Colleen, who was here earlier, she's out on the, literally out on the routes every day. So she's able to connect with residents, be able to provide education. We have a lot of materials that we've gotten through the grant. So we, this grant money that we get, we pay for the mailings that you get in your mail. We pay for stickers that we can put on, on the actual toters. We can buy actual toters. So there's a lot of really good things that, that we're able to do with this money. So I'm sorry, probably talking too much about it. I get excited about it. But that is the reason we're applying for this grant.
Funny you say you get excited about it. When you said, started off and said that this makes you happy, I was thinking, wow, there's, there's you and I in the room, and that's probably about it, that I get happy about this. But do board members have any questions or comments regarding the grant? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to apply for, accept, and expend a grant in the amount of 15,400 from Massachusetts Department of Environmental and Protect, Environmental Protection to support recycling and education activities.
I'll second.
Motion been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffley?
Yes.
Mr. Bertham?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter? Mr. Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And the next item through the chair again is another grant application for shared services that Ms. Coyle can explain.
Thank you, Julie. So this, this grant is in the same realm that as COVID-19 has happened, there are public service, I'm sorry, public health excellent shared service grant applications that have become available to us. We are also working closely with CMRPC, with other boards of health. And this particular grant is, involves six towns. So it's Auburn, Brimfield, Dudley, Oxford, Southbridge, and Webster. Webster is the host community. And we have been meeting, actually a relatively short amount of time, but within the past couple of months, we have been meeting with colleagues and coming up with the application. The application, CMRPC assisted with us. It was for $300,000. This application is that money for three years. So it's a three-year grant. There is no, there's no money by the town that we have to put in for this three years. And what the, what the grant is, provides is it's going to hire two positions. So it's going to be a regional health inspector and a regional community health coordinator. And those two positions are going to be hired by the host community, which is Webster. So the town of Webster will hire these two people. And they will be coordinated through the Webster Board of Health with assistance through CMRPC. And we will, the, the details of working out how often we will have these services is still, still coming through. But it is something that we have an intermunicipal agreement that we are, that we just got actually last week. It's gone through some legal reviews. All of the towns had input as to changes that needed to be made in it. And each town will have a, basically, a seat at the table for an oversight board. So we'll all be able to meet on a, I believe it's a minimum of a quarterly basis to be able to, to guide and be able to have the services, basically talk about how things are going, being able to make changes on, on the fly and, and that sort of thing. Again, this is, this is grant money that is helpful for us. These resource positions are meant to give some relief to the boards of health because of all the things that, all the responsibilities that we have. So it's meant to provide some assistance. The intermunicipal agreement, I have spoken with the, the town manager and assistant town manager. Our hope is to send this to town council, just to give it a final legal review for our town, even though it has been reviewed legally. And for the IMA, under Mass general law, this will come back to you at the next meeting. This vote for today is, is basically to accept and be able to expend the money for the grant. So very kind of dynamic process. Literally, we just got the final documents last week. And so what I'd like to do is offer this IMA and the associated documents to be able to provide to you at your next meeting. And hopefully you feel comfortable with it, and we can move forward and have Julie in the board sign.
So I just wanted to clarify, you are looking for a vote tonight to accept and expend the funds, right? And then we'll come back after. Okay.
Yes, please.
Do board members have any questions or comments?
You may have mentioned it. I'm sorry if I missed it. Was there a term to this one?
This one is three years. Yep. The other one was two. This one is three.
Do other board members have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll...
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, Mr. Carpenter?
Yeah, sorry. Seems to be a little time delay. I, I just was interested in what kind of services, this is quite a large area, and I know each town must have some individuality when it comes to their regulations. You know, how is, what kind of services are we looking for this person to, to provide? And I, I know Mrs. Coyle said that there are some details still to be worked out. So I certainly won't not support asking for it, but perhaps we can follow up it offline at some point.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, great question. Thank you for asking. So for the, the two positions, the regional health inspector is going to be available for us to do inspections. So whether or not that is any type of inspections that we need. So whether that be housing, food, septic well, camps, you, you name it, we're looking to be able to have assistance. So depending on the time of year, you know, we have, you know, beach inspections, camp inspections, usually in the, these type of months now. We are very busy with septic and well, but sometimes that tapers off, although not this past year. But sometimes that tapers off in the wintertime. So really, we're looking to utilize this person really as, to help us get the work done in the office. So one of the other pieces that Eileen and I were very excited about is there's the community health educator. That position is really meant to help us do the programs and do the education to the community that we may not have time to do. It's part of the job that we enjoy tremendously. But it's, it's consistently probably one of the things that all the communities that are involved in this shared service grant. It's the one area that everybody feels like there's a void. So that was kind of something that was across the board. So we're hoping to be able to have this person provide to us, come in and do a program, come in and come to one of our, you know, fairs, come up to the senior center, you know, be able to help educate the community on a various health topic. So that, hopefully, that, that helps answer the question.
Mr. Carpenter?
As if I could just follow up, Mr. Chairman, with one more. I know we, we've built up a group of vehicles so that when our inspectors are going out into the community, that when they pull up, people know that they're actually from the town and they're not somebody who might mean to do them harm or be dishonest in some fashion. How would this person, I mean, again, this person is covering quite a, quite a bit of territory, would they have access to our fleet and other communities' fleet to do these? Or how will that, I mean, maybe I'm getting a little too far into the weeds on this, but I just figured I would ask.
Great question. So as part of this grant, we are actually looking to get a, use the grant dollars to lease a vehicle for the, for the staff people. So the grant, obviously quite, quite a large grant, $300,000 for three years. So you're talking close to $1 million. There are, the, the grant dollars will actually cover, you know, like phones for these staff members. They'll cover, you know, materials, iPad connection. We're talking about a, some programs to help them do inspections that will make it a little easier for them, the use of a vehicle. So there, this is literally like, all, the grant is covering all of that. So, you know, I, I can understand your concern. We're, we're kind of short on vehicles as it is. Don't want somebody coming in and taking a vehicle, and now we're short in the office. That's not going to happen with this.
Thank you. No, I wasn't concerned about that. I was just more concerned about the person covering such a large area. And, and I just, making sure that people were comfortable with who's, who's pulling up and doing this, because they'll be, you know, they're used to you folks now because you're... they're used to you folks now because you're in and out of their establishments, as you say. So I just want to make sure that, you know, people are comfortable from day one that this person is official and from whatever community they're in, but thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, we, we will, we can take that back and make sure when the town of Webster does the leasing that there's some sort of emblem on the, making sure the, the vehicle and the person, I, I think all of us are on the same page as to, they need to have some sort of identifiable clothing and identification. Thank you.
Do other board members have any questions or comments? Town manager.
Through the chair, I just want to clarify. So when the board, when the board is about to take a vote, it's mine is staying in from Ms. Coyle that the grant, while we have it on the agenda and the amount of 300,000, the grant's actually 900,000. It's 300,000 each year for three years.
For a year.
So when the board takes a vote this evening, it would be to accept and expend a grant in the amount of 900,000. Correct?
Oh, I guess over a three-year period.
Over a period of three years.
Yep.
Or 300,000 annually. I just want to make sure we get the language right on the vote. So we're not just accepting 300, we're accepting the entire grant moving forward.
Maybe 300,000 annually for three years.
All right, well, with that clarification, I'll, is there a motion?
To that point, actually through the chair, should we revise the last one that was for a period of two years?
Sure. It, I, I guess I just want to clarify on the last one. I don't know if we have to renew that one. I, I think it's a renewal, but.
Oh, so we leave that one alone?
But that, that's okay, I, I'm okay, you know, I'm okay if you want to do that. We're, we're hoping to do the, the other one for two years and this one for three years.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept and expand a grant in the amount of 300,000 per year for a term of three years from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health to support two positions, community health coordinator and regional health inspector.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffley.
Yes.
Mr. Berthium.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Ren.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
And with that.
Thanks, darling.
Back to, yeah, our, our next item, which is communications, moving up. Back to our regular agenda. Communications, we have none. Board of Selectmen general items, we have a discussion and potential vote on the process to interview candidates for the vacant library board of trustees seat. We had started discussing this at our last meeting, but I'll turn things over to the town manager.
Thank you, through the chair, just to remind the public that under Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 11, there is a process to be followed when there's a vacancy in an elected seat. And as we know, there is a vacancy at the library board of trustees. The board, your, your board of selectmen discussed this. Can't recall if it was the last meeting or the meeting before, but you did discuss it. And I think the question was, was there a policy that this board needed to revise in order to have a joint interview with the board of trustees? So Sharon and Rachel have both gone back through actually watching the tapes, going through the minute meetings, the minutes of the meetings as well as all the votes. And basically, there was never a policy on how to hold this. There was just a vote to, the last two times there were vacancies, there was a vote taken by the board of selectmen to have the library board of trustees do the interviews and come back with a recommendation of their candidate. Prior to that, there had been a practice where the board had a joint interview. So I, I would say two things. One, you don't need to change a policy because there is no policy on this. It was just a vote. So you could take a vote this evening based on your conversation at the last meeting. It sounds like the majority wanted to have a joint interview. So if that still is the case and the board did that, you don't need to change a policy. You would just need to take a vote to have a joint interview. I would also add in that the board of trustees, when I told them that, that was likely what you were going to be doing, I asked them if they would be available to have, to do this on August 9th, which is your next meeting. So they actually had a meeting last Wednesday and took a vote to participate in your meeting with a joint meeting on August 9th and to have a joint interview on August 9th. So they are on board with that if this board so desires to do that.
Thank you, it's, I think it was at our last meeting. It's, it's good to know that the library board of trustees is also available for that meeting. But do board members have any comments or questions regarding this?
Through the chair, just a quick question. Were we going to hold interviews and vote in the same meeting? Or had we discussed separating those meetings?
Through the chair, I think we discussed both. I think one time it was done in two separate meetings and another time it was done on the same evening. I don't think the board had come to any decision because I think they wanted to look back at the policy. But again, there was no policy. It was just a lot of discussion about how to best interview those candidates.
We're following up.
I'm going to let Mr. Ren ask you to follow up and then go on. I don't know who called on, I know there's a delay so that might cause some confusion.
No, I just with the, you know, we don't meet as much in the summer. I think I'd be more on board with having just it all in one meeting for expediency.
I'm, I'm sorry, was that Mr. Carpenter or Mr. Berthium that said something on?
It's the chair, it was myself, Mr. Berthium.
Go ahead.
So I am certainly happy that we're going to do a joint interview. I, I do think that we should, before we were to vote on whether we should select somebody that night or not, I would respect what the, the library board, current board interviewers would prefer to do. So I don't know if we have to vote on whether we selected the person that night or not, but I can, I would certainly make the motion for us to do a joint interview with the library interview board of trustees for our next meeting.
All right. To our town manager, do we need the vote tonight on whether or not to select someone the same night? I, I wouldn't think so. I would think you could even decide that at the meeting.
I would agree.
Do other board members have questions or comments?
Through the chair, what I might suggest, and I'm just thinking out loud, under Chapter 41, Section 11, the board of selectmen, I believe, also the board of trustees, first of all, you have to post a joint meeting. But in this particular, you have to post a joint meeting one week in advance. So I would post the joint meeting with the agenda item to say interviews and potential vote. That way you've noticed the public that you may take a vote. And that way, if you don't, you've still already made your seven-day notice and you could do it at an ensuing meeting, if that makes sense.
Other comments? Seeing none. I don't know if there is a motion on this or if we're all in agreement, but I'll accept one if there's a motion.
I'll make a motion that we hold a joint interview process of to interview the candidates for the vacant library board of trustees seat at the August 9th meeting to be posted one week prior with interviews and possible or potential votes.
Motion been made and seconded by a roll call vote. Mrs. Ruffley.
Yes.
Mr. Berthium.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Vice Chair Ren.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, unanimous. Moving on, we have agenda item 5B, which is gift acceptances, and we have none. Proclaimations and recognitions, we have none. Brings us to table items, oh, no, I'm sorry. Can't see past my own scribbles. We have a vote to accept and expend $5,000 from the Arthur and Martha Pappas Foundation.
Through the chair, that's correct. So on this item, item E, we were very happy that we were able to pull together on short notice a summer concert series this year. Once we realized that the governor was lifting the state of emergency, I, I want to really thank Ken Fairbanks for all the work that he did to pull together a concert series. In the interim, once we had the series pulled together, and again, we did, we did not receive any donations for this this year because the businesses didn't have the opportunity to know we were going to be holding this. We were approached by Music Worcester to see if we could, if they could have a concert at the facility. Initially, they asked if they could hold it there and sell tickets. And we said, we really want to have all our events free and open to the public. Could we work something out where we pay you so you don't have to get the ticket revenue? And you could, we could make it free and available to the public. So basically, they were thrilled with that idea. And they also asked if we would be willing to be the host site for the Brubeck Brothers concert, which I'm happy to say was, not happy to say it was postponed last Thursday, but happy to say right now, the weather is looking like we may be able to have it tomorrow evening. Right now, it is supposed to go from 6:00 to 7:30 tomorrow night. All the forecasts we're looking at, I don't want to jinx this, but all the forecasts we're looking at are saying that the, the worst-case scenario would be a 16% chance of rain. And with some of them even had a 7%, which was really the one I want to go with. So we are, we're going to make the call tomorrow morning at 7:00 AM as we did last Thursday. I'll talk to Music Worcester at 7:00. There are band members that are coming from mostly Connecticut, but one flying from New York. So we want to give them the opportunity to know if it's being postponed. If it is being postponed, we are going to pick, hopefully they'll be able to give us another date. We don't have that date right now. We never thought we'd have two rain dates in a row rain. So that being said, when Music Worcester reached out about the Brubeck Brothers, the cost really exceeded what we were able to fund. But we wanted to develop a good partnership with Music Worcester. We felt it was a great opportunity for Auburn residents and residents in the surrounding communities to hear a tremendous performance. So I reached out to Dr. Martha Pappas and the Arthur and Martha Pappas Foundation to ask if they would be willing to, if we could apply for a grant for this. And she enthusiastically said yes. And her foundation, which is the same foundation that is funding the project at the Library Gauda Park and the bridge, the foundation got back to me and said that they would be willing to donate $5,000 to the town as a grant. They have a grant program. So we will get a grant for $5,000 to offset our costs. That in concert, I shouldn't use that word, in conjunction with, sorry, no pun intended, in conjunction with Music Worcester, we're able to afford to have Music Worcester have their performance in August, which is a choral group. And they're going to be doing a lot of show, show tunes and things. So that's a really interesting one that we haven't had yet. And we're also able to have the Brubeck Brothers because Music Worcester is paying for a portion of this. So with our $5,000, we're able to pay the money that we need to pay the Music Worcester and offset the cost of some of the other concerts that we have booked for the rest of the summer. So the $5,000 will go a long way. And it does ensure that we're getting the Dave Brubeck, excuse me, Dave Brubeck's sons there. Yeah, the Brubeck Brothers, my understanding is, I believe it's a four-member group and two of them are the sons of the legendary jazz musician Dave Brubeck. So they play all over the country. They have quite a following and they do sell tickets. So we've already received a lot of calls in our office, a lot of interest on social media for this concert. And we have planned, so people know, we've planned for details, to help us with the parking. And we've reached out and secured three auxiliary parking areas that people, when the parking fills up, which it likely would, for people to park and walk into the facility. And that's all online. And this concert, again, is 6:00 to 7:30 with no intermissions. All of our other ones are 6:00 to 8:00. This one's just a little bit different. And it kicks off our summer series. So we really are grateful to the Pappas Foundation once again for supporting us. It's a great cultural event and looking forward to a continued partnership with Music Worcester. Hopefully in the future, we, we want to continue to do some different shows with them. They've been great. So I am seeking a vote from the board to accept this $5,000 grant from the foundation.
Do board members have any questions or comments?
Chairman.
Mr. Carpenter.
I just wanted to throw you to the town manager, thank her for all her work on this. I think this is going to be a, a great event. And it's certainly a first for Auburn and it's, and it's going to be a great night. I'm looking forward to going myself. So hopefully there'll be some parking available. But with that, I would make a motion that we accept this with gratitude and that it'll later be prepared for the chair's signature to send to the donor.
Motion's been made, is there a second?
A second.
Second.
By a roll call vote, Mrs. Ruffley.
Yes.
Mr. Berthium.
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter.
Yes.
Mr. Ren.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, unanimous.
Great, thank you all and thank you, Mr. Carpenter, for your comments. I should just mention, the weather does look like it's going to maybe have some rain early in the morning. So generally, a lot of people come with blankets to sit on. We would highly recommend that you bring chairs, some type of folding chair, because the ground may still be damp. It may not dry out by, by tomorrow evening. So thank you again.
Moving on, we have an update on the RFP for land and potential public safety facility. So then I'll turn it over to the town manager.
Right, through the chair, thank you very much. I just wanted to bring the board up to speed on where we stand with the status of the RFP that we had issued for land for a potential public safety facility. And I say potential because, as we know, there is a lot of a process that you have to go through for this, including a debt exclusion vote and a vote of town meeting for authorization. So we're not close to that yet. But the first step in this was to determine a location, a site for a joint public safety facility. So we had put an RFP out and we actually got in touch with some property owners and some developers and some brokers and just said, you know, this RFP is out there. Make sure if you want to get it, you pick it up from our office. It is required when you issue an RFP that people who are interested in it, pick it up and write down who they are and their contact information. Because if you were to have any type of amendment to the RFP, you have to be able to go back to everyone who picked it up. So I can tell you that it was picked up by two parties. But the bids were due on June 30th. And again, this is asking landowners or property owners, they could have a building on it, if they would be willing to sell their land to the town for a public safety facility, meeting the criteria that we put in the RFP and recognizing that it would be conditional upon getting the approvals of town meeting and the approvals of the, of the debt exclusion vote of the voters of Auburn. And unfortunately, the proposals were due June 30th at noon and we did not receive any proposals. So the following week, we had a meeting with the Public Safety Facilities Advisory Committee to inform them of the status of, of the bids and also to talk to them about the potential for pursuing, looking at a Plan B. That doesn't mean we're recommending a Plan B yet. We're saying we need to have a Plan B. And we don't want to have five Plan Bs. You kind of want to start with one because we do have a consultant, Tecton, that we're paying and we don't want to inappropriately utilize any of those funds when we could take one step at a time. So the Plan B that was discussed, that we had presented to the committee just to see if they wanted us to even pursue it. Because I could tell you right now, we have more questions than we have answers. But to get those answers, it will be very time-consuming. So if there was absolutely no interest in this Plan B, we weren't going to proceed. So I would tell you what we explained to the committee and no decision's been made at all. This is a major decision, all of us agree, can't be rushed into. But it was just something we wanted them to consider was rather than a single joint public safety facility that would combine the two fire, current fire sites into one centralized location along with the police department for one location, we are looking at the possibility, or at least we want to discuss this, could we have a joint facility with police and fire headquarters, still maintain a second fire facility, but put that joint facility on the current West Street site where the building currently houses the Auburn Fire Station 2 as well as the school. as well as the school department offices? And then keep the current fire headquarters on Auburn Street, but not as a headquarters. Keep that as Fire Station 2. And therefore, a lot of the equipment and vehicles would be housed at the new location, because they would have base space that was actually big enough to hold the vehicles, because right now, we don't have that. So it was an option that we wanted to bring to the committee. There had some tremendous questions, which are questions we have as well, that we need to pursue. And those, before we even go back to Tecton to do any kind of analysis, they had done just a real brief analysis to basically just say, "Yes, it could fit there, but you're probably going to need some additional space for parking, whether it be employee parking or vehicle parking, that you may need some additional space." So there's a lot of options that we would have to look at for that, acquiring that additional space, or doing a trade, or looking at, you know, potential space with the schools. There's just a lot. The other question is, where would the access be? And can you even have access off of Southbridge Street rather than West Street? So use, utilize the portion of land that the town owns. It is, it is almost like a hammerhead. It comes off of Southbridge Street, goes over to West Street. But it does connect, but there may be wetlands there. We know there are wetlands. I just don't know, at this point, without doing a further analysis, how much space that would leave us for an access road, if you take into consideration the wetlands or what type crossing you need. So that's another major question we have to ask. Another question that came up from the committee was whether the school department and the school committee would be willing to move to the police station. That has been discussed all along. We've had preliminary conversations with the school superintendent, both the prior one and the current one. And their, the current superintendent, I don't want to speak for him publicly, but I can tell you, he feels that whatever's best for the town, you know, that they would be accommodating to, which would mean that if we had the entire West Street site, that building could be demolished and a brand-new building put up there. Depending on what phase we went through, there are different ways to do this. One would involve actually having to relocate the school department for two years and relocate the fire station for two years. So that's, that's a challenge right there. So we have not spoken yet with the school superintendent. I reached out last week just to see if we could set up a meeting to talk about it, just to see what their thoughts on it are. Do they want to go to the police station? Would that be an option for them? We are limited with what we can do with the police station because of the way the land was purchased. So either way, we all know that there are facility issues with the current headquarters at the police station, whether the police remain there as a police department or whether the school department goes in there. Some of those issues are going to have to be addressed. There will be fewer issues that have to be addressed if it's strictly used as an office space for the school department than as an operations headquarters for police. There's just different operational needs and facility needs. So that's another issue that we have to look at, just to see. And then the fourth issue that was raised, that I think is considerable, was, and also a very good issue to raise, finding out from the school department and the school committee, do they even want a police station at that site in proximity to the middle school? Is it beneficial? Is it, are there disadvantages? How do they feel about it? So there's a lot of issues that we have to talk about before we even take another step further. So the committee asked that I reach out to the school superintendent, which I've done, I'm just waiting to set up a meeting. And based on that, is this something that we can move forward on? Or is this something that's an absolute out-of-the-question? In which case, we'll look to develop a potential Plan C. So that's where we are right now. No decisions have been made. I would tell you that we're not looking at anything happening within the next, probably close to a year. Because whatever we do, we have to do this right. We have to educate the public. We have to make sure that we have all the information. Let's assume we did go forward with this. We've got to come up with another budget, another layout. We've got to look at the land. We've got to look at parking. And then initially, we were saying, if the land came in now, we would go for a special election in the fall to see if we got the debt exclusion vote, and then go in October to see if we could get the authorization from town meeting. We can't possibly do that. This board would have to take a vote at its next meeting in August to have a special election. That's obviously not going to happen. I, I think it's actually even going to be tight to get it done by next May, but that would be the goal, if we could do all the public outreach, get all the information. And again, that's assuming that Plan B is even viable. We don't know if it's viable, but it was something that we felt was worth exploring. From an operational perspective, both police and fire feel it would work well for them, assuming that they could get the space that they needed. But again, there are the other issues that we have to look at beyond just the operational. So I wanted to bring this board up to speed. The Public Safety Committee will be meeting again. I believe they said they're going to meet again in about a month. They were actually our first hybrid remote meeting that we held in here last week. And we didn't have the technical difficulties that we just had now, but again, we did find a little issue with the podium. That sounds like those have been addressed. So we'll work on the issues from tonight as well, I assure you. But anyway, they will be having likely another meeting within a month or so. So I just wanted to keep all of you up to date. I want to keep the public informed as to where we stand on this.
Rub it in that I couldn't work the conference call button, but all right.
Not your fault.
This is, yeah, obviously, there's a lot of questions, so. But do board members have any questions or comments with what we've heard?
Yeah, I have a quick question. How does having a joint facility at that location affect traffic at the middle school?
That's another issue that we would have to look at. But presumably, it would, there would be its own driveway and its own access. So it wouldn't have anything to do with the entrance into the current middle school. It would have its own access egress. It would have to have that. But to your point, it's, you know, would it, how would it affect maybe evening meetings if, if indeed, we needed to look to expand for parking? We don't want to, we don't want to take away any parking from them either that they need. So we would have to take a look at their site plan and see. But right now, initially, our thought was it would not impact their access egress, because we'd have to have a completely separate one. Good question, though. Another issue that we need to look at.
Sorry.
No, it's a.
Hi, we're gone.
Well, that's why we wanted to raise this, because there are, there are a lot of issues that have to be looked at in order to do this. I would say, and especially for our newest selectman, and I should have said this at the beginning, the committee has been working with Tecton for about a year and a half. It got delayed because of COVID to a degree. We, we weren't able to proceed. We didn't know what was going to happen with COVID, so we put it on hold for a few months. But the committee has done a lot of work with Tecton to look at all sites in town. And our, our site choices are extremely limited, extremely, based on response time and call time that the fire department needs to have more, probably more than on the police department side. They need to ensure certain response time. So that really limits, if you only have one facility, it has to be in a certain radius. If you're going to keep two facilities, which is what we're trying to avoid, but this, it could work, as long as each facility, I guess, given the fact that we already own West Street, that's a purchase price that we wouldn't have to, to put out, you know, it's millions of dollars. However, that means you also have to put more money into fire headquarters, because you still have to have a clean room. You still have to bring it up to the standards of operating, whether it's your headquarters or your secondary site. So that's why, at the end, we don't know for sure yet if there's going to be any kind of cost efficiencies doing this, and that's something that we have to look at.
Do other board members have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bertheum.
Yeah, through you to the town manager. I'm not liking what I'm hearing as far as, you know, Plan B and having, you know, a big facility over on West Street, kind of put to one side of the town. I don't like really the fact that we would have to keep a pretty major station right at Ferrari Square, where we're, we're trying to make a lot of foot traffic and make it, you know, a busier place rather than a less busy place, and then, I believe, fire headquarters there. What, what would be the possibility of taking the two fields at Lemansky and putting the fields over at West Street and using all of that space for a nice big public facility across from the existing police station?
That is a great question, Mr. Bertheum. Actually, the chair of the Public Safety Facilities Committee asked the same question. We cannot use the fields at Lemansky for anything other than recreational use. They were acquired through, I believe, three Land and Water Conservation Act grants from the federal government. That was a pass-through to the state. And those grants require that the property be deeded to be recreational use only. The question came up, could that be changed by the legislature? And I don't know the answer. The state legislature, this was a federal program, and the town had agreed at the time that they would keep the land as fields or as recreation. So now we have a dog park there. It's all, you know, it's all recreation there. So to change any of that, I don't, I don't know that the state legislature has the authority to change a federal program. So my understanding is, in order to get that changed and release the town from the obligation to keep Lemansky as recreational, that that would have to be something that was changed on a federal level. Again, we, we haven't pursued that, because the question was just raised, as you did, Mr. Bertheum, just raised last week, to see if that could happen. It would certainly create a much larger area. You'd still have to recreate the fields. But as it stands right now, without anything being done legislatively, we're not able to do that.
Through the chair, to the town manager, I would certainly like to know what our options are on that, because I think that that would put a facility in a much more central location. It would give us a lot of land. And, and I think that if the federal would, would have lead to it, we're, we're basically swapping a field for a field. We would, we would tear down Randall and, and put the fields over there, which we already have fields over there with the middle school. So we would probably be able to expand that and make that a nice sports facility as well. So I, I would definitely want to pursue what it take, what it would take to find out from the federal powers that be whether that could be done or not.
Through the chair, if the board wants me to pursue that, I'm happy to do that.
Mr. Chairman.
And Mr. Carpenter.
Yeah, I know when we built the police station, we had to, because that parcel that it's on, we had to swap land up on Packard Drive. So we had to encumber land. I certainly won't not support Mr. Bertheum's inquiry, but my concern is, we, we just spent a considerable amount of money to put another facility up there. We demolished another facility to relocate that. So, I mean, Lemansky Arc, whatever you want to call it, was designed as that complex. I don't know that the streets that we're talking about are necessarily suitable, as well as the entrance to the park is very constricted. As we're looking at these type of vehicles, and God knows what they'll look like in the future, you know, I worry. There's a house right there, you know, I certainly don't want to trash an investment that we just made that we potentially might have to then go and spend town money to build the dog park, to recreate it in another location. So I, I would say, I know that eminent domain is, is something that we've done in the past with the school building process. I certainly, as a member, would not rule that out, because I think if we're building this facility, Randall is a very tight location. There's already a lot going on there. It's a narrow road. You really can't improve that road. And, you know, when we built the new police station, they didn't want to be on Southbridge Street. You know, now we're forcing them back almost to Southbridge Street because of lack of space and availability. But to me, I wouldn't rule out, as a member, you know, looking at eminent domain and finding a site that is suitable, that meets their needs and is going to meet the future needs, because I do not want to be alive 20 years from now and hear that we have to, or if I'm even here in town, you know, that the town of Auburn had to build a new facility after, you know, I mean, we spent several million dollars for the police station. We're looking at a $40 million project plus for this one. I'm, I'm not a big fan of the $40 million club, that we're just thinking that we're just going to constantly be rolling over debt. You know, I don't think that's a healthy thing for the town. We, we haven't even paid off, you know, the high school yet, and we're already looking at it. And I think it's needed, but I also think that we need to look at the future space for these facilities. This is a priority for the community. It's, it's a very important part of our community. And I think we need to really not rule out any options at this time. We should be looking at eminent domain, or we shouldn't be ruling it out, certainly. Let's look at West Street, if that's something that the committee that we've, that's been formed wants to do. Let's look at, you know, Lemansky, but I think Lemansky's a big lift. And I don't think West Street is going to recreate what we have over at Lemansky, in my opinion. But that's, that's all I have. But thank you.
Through the chair, if I may, the, initially, we had recommended against eminent domain, just because obviously it would be easier to go through the bid process and work directly with a property owner. The committee did ask us about the eminent domain process, and we are getting more information on that, to Mr. Carpenter's point. It, it is an option. I would tell you, just more from, my, my knowledge of eminent domain is, it could be a very expensive option and a very time-consuming option. But if you go through eminent domain and there is any type of, as you know, any type of challenges in court, that's what can get tied up. So anyway, we are in the process of doing some research on that, that we wanted to report back to the committee, just to show them, as you said, Mr. Carpenter, we do have to look at all the options. That, that is an option. It wasn't our preferred option, but if there are no other options that work, then that may be the only option. We were just trying to find other ways to get this done without eminent domain, but it's absolutely an option.
No, and I, certainly nothing that I said should be construed as a criticism of the process. I'm just saying, we need to leave all options on the table. This is one of the most important buildings that we're going to build in town outside of our school buildings. And it's really, I don't want to take somebody's property, you know, just for willy-nilly, but I don't think that's what we're, we're contemplating here. I think we're, we've been very deliberative, or the committee has been very deliberative in their search process. And, you know, I think we should use that data to inform us, and I know we will. But thank you.
Do other board members have any questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Bertheum.
I just want to make a point that I know Mr. Carpenter mentioned the, the dog park and that type of thing. I'm not looking at going around the ice arena to the, the arc that had the track or the playground or the dog park or the skate park. I'm, I'm pretty much talking about the, the basic senior league field and the softball field, and maybe part of the, what we called the, the exercise field or whatever it was. It was an all-purpose field in the back, which we, I know we practiced a lot of, a lot of football and things there. But, you know, it, it certainly would only take away, you know, pretty much two fields. It's not taking away that whole complex. The ice arena would be in between that complex and a house on that side of the street. And then there's a bridge before you get to a house on the other side, on that side of the street. So it, it could be a logical place, but again, I'm not looking to take away all of the fields that are there. And, and again, it's just something to look into. It's not, I'm, I'm not saying that I want it there. But if we're going to use town, you know, existing town facilities, I would rather have it more centralized and have a nice big piece of land where, you know, the tom at going out onto Foxford Street there. would, you know, would, would give plenty of turning radius and everything else as opposed to, you know, trying to come out of West Street all the time and being on one side of town. So I just want to clarify my thoughts on, on that, the, the field possibility.
Through the chair, Mr. Berthium, that's, I, I understood you exactly as you just put it. I understood you the first time. But that's what I figured was the fields in front, not the ones in back. But the public safety, you know, subcommittee there, there, I agree with Dan as well. We should look at all possibilities, see what's, what's available. I myself took a note for what you had said, Lionel, and that's, I'm going to look into what entities are responsible for moving federal deed restrictions. You know what I mean? Let's start somewhere and we can report back and, you know, see where we go from there.
Through the chair, we would also, if, if that was a possibility, we would have to go back and work with Tecton just to make sure that that site was suitable as far as response times. I mean, I can, I can assume it maybe just given where its location is, but that site had not been looked at or calculated out for the fire response times. So that's something that would have to be looked at too. I, I'm assuming because it's close proximity to some of the sites that were looked at, but I believe it's a little outside of the radius, but only because it was a park that was not looked at. It doesn't mean it can't be looked at.
Are there any other comments? I just have one question. So I, I think this has probably been talked about before. The reason that we would need to keep the existing fire station open if we were to use West Street would mainly be for call times, right?
Absolutely correct. The call times, as it stands now, to eliminate either one of those, you'd have to have a central, to eliminate both, you'd need a central location. If you, the location goes too much outside of that call time radius, one side or the other, it requires two facilities, which was the issue when Mr. Berthium, you know, hit it on the head. It wasn't what we had wanted. We wanted the one site. Short of eminent domain right now, there were no other, eminent domain or potentially Lemansky could be looked at. Again, it had not been looked at because there were federal restrictions on it.
If we don't get the right site, we may have to go to firehouses anyway.
Correct. That was an option that was looked at, was to have two facilities, two fire facilities as opposed to one.
But even size-wise, if it's not the right location, you probably have to split it up.
Correct, correct. So there were a lot of options looked at by the committee and by Tecton. They've, they've been through a number of different scenarios. And again, this, this wasn't one that had bubbled to the surface initially because it wasn't, you know, the, the best of the scenarios. It was looking to see if it was a possibility. I do think there were some hurdles on this site. It was something that we just threw out there as a, should we look any further? Or is it an absolute no? But before we can even say that, there's so many other pieces that you have to look at. But yes, it's all driven by response times. Police didn't have those response time issues as much. They, the chief would tell you they could probably go just about anywhere. A couple of concerns, I know there was some concerns about Route 20 from both police and fire about getting out onto Route 20 and signalization, lane crossings and things like that. That, that was a bit of an issue on 20. So they were trying to avoid 20 and look at 12.
The only other comment I'd want to make is that I have severe reservations about using eminent domain and don't know now if I would support anything that uses it, but I guess it would depend on the situation. And I just wanted to voice that concern now. Seeing as there are no other comments, move on to item H, discussion and potential vote on remote participation policy through April 1st. And in your packets, there is the draft policy. I'll turn it over to the town manager to talk about the draft.
Thank you. We had an internal meeting last week with our IT department as well as Department of Development and Inspeccional Services and the cable television just to talk about how are we going to do this with 30-plus boards, commissions and committees? And how are we going to do it from a staffing perspective? How are we going to do it from a technological perspective? Can we do it? So as you know, just for the public to know, the, the new law that's in place allows continued remote participation through April 1, 2022. At that time, that date could be extended or new legislation could have passed to make this permanent, which we all hope remote participation is permanent. I, I think we've all, on this board anyway, discussed it and we, we think it's a, a good thing to have. That being said, if we, we thought the Board of Selectmen really can't always dictate how the meetings are going to be run, but on the other hand, a lot of boards and commissions look to the Board of Selectmen for advice on how it's run. And I know this board has taken a vote in the past to have as many meetings as possible televised. So that's, so we came up with the thought of if you had some type of a policy, and it doesn't have to be a strict policy, but a policy encouraging the various boards and commissions to have remote meetings. Because our concern is, we're hearing some of the boards and commissions want strictly in-person, some want strictly remote. From a staffing perspective, we kind of need to know how this is going to run because we do need to have staff support. The cable television is limited to how many live meetings it can have, but we can have taped meetings. And our thought was if every board, so to look at the policy, we thought if this board took, made a policy about remote participation that encourages all of our boards and commissions to have some type of remote component to it, so a hybrid model. And that if they do that, we would ask that those boards and commissions that have a hybrid identify somebody like what, similar to what happened today, and that's a good example, identify somebody and make sure we can train them because you wouldn't have known how to do that because it's the first time we've done it. So have every board and commission identifies one member, and even if it's on a rotating basis, who can actually sit at the computer, turn it on, get the remote meeting started and click the button for recording. So, and also be the person who lets, makes somebody else a presenter. So if somebody has something to show on the screen, you can do it. Because we couldn't staff 30 meetings. We, we don't have the capability of doing it. The other thing is, we don't right now have the technology, which is why I put this in your packet. I just wanted you to see, this room is capable of having that because we have the screen. The planning board is capable of doing that. We have the equipment. We are working on creating that possibility at the library and the senior center. It was more a matter of making sure that we had the remote and the audio. But again, we better keep in mind, we may not have the staffing and there are only so many people who can televise live. So the remote piece is going to be important because someone needs to be able to operate it and, and record the meeting. So it was our recommendation to you, just for consideration, that this is going to be in place, this law is in place until April. And we thought it might be worth the board taking a look at a policy. I drafted one. No, no problems if you want to take a look at it, revise it, take your time, but we thought it would be a good idea to kind of have some kind of consistency and make the other boards and commissions understand that there's a value to having a hybrid. There's a value to not just always having something everybody in person. We, that being said, we also talked about the fact that it may be easier for the planning board to encourage the applicants to attend in person. But again, if that can't happen and applicant needs to call in remotely, we have the technology for that to happen. But the board, it may be easier, you know, for them to see the plans at all in person. But they found a way to do it remotely and this way it gives an applicant the opportunity if something were to come up and they can't get there, gives the applicant the opportunity to participate remotely as well. And likewise, we thought it would be wise for the board to encourage the board and commission members themselves, if possible, to be in person, but we all recognize it can't always be possible. There are exten, there are circumstances. There's work-related, you know, if any one of you were at your job and couldn't get here by the start of the meeting, but you could do it remotely from, from your car or from the office, that's great. So I think it's a good idea to encourage in-person participation by applicants, even applicants to your board coming in so you have the opportunity to meet them and actually see them and get to know them. But on the other hand, it's not always possible. So that's, Ms. Chair, I just, I put that in your packet just with some background history on it, some updated information on it. We, we do know that we can use some of our CARES money to upgrade whatever technology we need to make other rooms available for this. Right now, we're obviously always limited on space. In town hall, we have two meeting rooms, that's it. And we juggle between all the boards and commissions and the regulatory boards have always taken priority because they have to, because they're regulatory. So over time, we will have Camp Gleason, you know, you got an update from DPW on that a couple of weeks ago. And Camp Gleason will ultimately be another area that we can have meetings like this and it will be great. But right now, we are kind of limited to the two rooms and we're going to work on analyzing the other spaces, like I said, the library and the senior center to see what do we need to make it so they don't have audio issues or they don't have video issues? Because that's going to happen until we get, until we get this all figured out.
Do board members have questions or comments or preferences?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carpenter.
I think Lionel was first.
Oh, I heard your voice at the same time.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Two things. One is that Mr. Carpenter and I are participating remotely and I was not able to get my, my updated packet. So what I have in the email doesn't have that proposed policy. So I, I would like to take a look at that and, you know, maybe look at this item again, maybe at our next meeting. And the second thing that I wanted to bring up was, you know, we, we talk about the, the library and the other board meeting room. What is the status of Camp Gleason? I thought we're putting that together for meetings and is that a, a long-term thing or are we nearing using that facility? And are, are we equipping that with income? And is, you know, we had gotten COVID money and can we put any of that COVID money toward equipment being that, you know, remote meetings has really been caused by COVID in the first place?
Through the chair, I'll have to go back and get the copy of the report from Mr. Coyle on the Camp Gleason. If I recall, the completion date is at least a year out right now. They got delayed by some COVID-related issues as well as some building facility issues. So I believe that was about a year out. So the problem with using CARES money for Camp Gleason is it won't be open and used for remote meetings by the deadline of the law, current law of April 1. So we can use the CARES money for remote meetings now until April 1, but after April 1, now those CARES dollars, they're not eligible for use unless you directly tie it to COVID. And saying that COVID caused remote, it did, but the only way we can use the dollars is specific to direct COVID. There's a lot of restrictions on it. That being said, Camp Gleason will be outfitted. That's the whole intent. The plan is to make it so that we can have additional meeting space. It will be outfitted for live TV. It'll be outf, I'm looking over at Chris Hugo, outfitted for live TV, for live streaming, for remote meetings. We'll, we can have that technology put in there. It just likely won't be eligible for any CARES funding because those dollars won't be available at that time. And the library and the senior center, those will be eligible. We're in the process of working with Mike Marino and Chris Hugo to take a look at the library and the senior center. What do we need to make them enhance their technology abilities so that you can have effective remote meetings? You can have a remote meeting, you can have a, you can have a hybrid meeting, but if the sound quality isn't good, it defeats the purpose. So we've got to look at it and see, do we need speakers? Do we need telephones? Do we need larger screens? What, what do we need to get that done? And on that, we will be able to spend CARES dollars, assuming we can get that done in the next month or so. Did that answer your question, Mr. Berthium?
Yeah, yes, it did. And then I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, push, give us, give us a chance to see that, that sample policy and, and kind of give it some thought before we take any votes on it.
No, absolutely. Through the chair, I just put something together just to give you something to react to. You could completely rewrite it, add to it. It was just something to get the conversation going because I, I do think a policy would be important. The board may, may want to require it, but I, I just didn't know if you wanted to go that route as opposed to highly strongly encouraging it. So it's up for discussion. The next meeting would be August 9th. You have another month to look at it. I guess I would just advise that hopefully by August you could take a position because other boards and commissions are asking us, and, and they're right now kind of going their own direction. Some of them are saying, well, I don't want to have it. I don't want to do a remote. Some are saying, well, I only want to do remote. Some are saying, well, I, I only want to do in-person. So we just thought it'd be best if we at least had a plan for how we're all going to proceed for the next nine months.
Mr. Berthium, do you have anything else?
Oh, thank you very much.
Mr. Carpenter.
Through you to the town manager, I just had a question. I, I didn't get to look at the, the updated act. These hybrid meetings, would we still be posting all of the meeting materials so that the public who are participating remotely can see things ahead of time like we are doing now?
That's correct, Mr. Carpenter. Everything, my understanding is that the extension of the remote participation amendment to the open meeting law was not changed by this legislation. So whatever we had to do for the last year, we have to continue to do until April. And that includes, you know, posting the link, putting the materials online, just in, actually, putting the materials online, I don't even recall if it was required as much as we do it. We just felt it was appropriate to do it. So we will continue to do it. The website's set up. We will post there anyway. Again, I think that's where it gets a little confusing if you've got boards and commissions that aren't doing it this way, because then the public may not know where to get the materials because not all the groups do that. But we, that is our intent to continue to do it. And all of the same requirements that exist for the remote meeting, my understanding is, would exist in a hybrid model. I was just saying to the chair, we need to find out as far as reading that entire beginning. I think that just needs to be tweaked a little bit to, just to be able to say that this meeting is being held both remotely and in-person. And again, I think we may still have to go through the, the, if you have members that are participating remotely, I think you have to do the roll call for those members who are participating remotely. I don't think the law changed any of that.
Are there any other questions or comments regarding the policy?
I just have one follow-up and I don't want to belabor because I know we're, we're getting on 9:15. So I would just ask that as we look at this, that we do include that, if this is going to be the shell of the policy even, hopefully moving forward beyond April 1, that we specify that all meeting materials be posted online, you know, well ahead of the meeting, you know, so that the public can review them and ask their question.
Through the chair, just really to let everybody know where I'd probably be on this, for clarity for everybody, for clarity for other boards, so the town administration knows they have the green light to go spend money on technologies that will be lasting at least for another year. I personally think that this is probably going to be here for good. I prefer in-person meetings, but I mean, this encourages democracy all around, whether it be by the participants or by the public. I think that's a phenomenal thing. With the exception of planning board, be, Mr. Carpenter, I think you'd agree, it wasn't uncommon for four planning board members to be standing over the table, looking at a plan, really diving into it. So I like that carved-out exception where they could encourage. But I'd, I'd be leaning towards requiring that we go towards a hybrid model.
Any other questions or comments?
Just as a point of clarification, the town manager supervises every board except for this board and any board we appoint. So the, so the planning board would fall under the, the manager. We would not be directing the other boards and commissions. I think we, we should encourage it. And certainly, yes, I think the planning board and, and Constitution and, and Board of Health and, and ZBA are a, are a very different animal. But I would leave it up to their discretion, you know? I, when I was a member of the planning board a million years ago, I always made sure that I got my packet and I went through it. But obviously, yeah, you know? We would have some really good discussions and I'm glad to hear that that's still continuing. I don't watch them as often as I should.
And through the chair, what, what I would propose is, regardless of who the appointing authority is for the boards and commissions, I think the policy should apply for all town boards and commissions. You appoint some, I appoint some. You appoint some, I appoint some. It's, there are certain committees that you actually have the moderator that appoints some, so I think it's just important for continuity purposes to say, regardless of the appointing authority, this is the policy, whether it's a required components of it or whether it's just strongly recommended. I just think we need to be consistent with all the boards.
I agree with the manager. I just want to be very clear that the charter specifies, we don't have the legal authority to set a policy for town meeting or for any boards that are appointed other than ourselves. So we should have that language in there, that this is, you know, that this was done in concert, you know, obviously, we would want, you know, if we're going to do town meeting, then we should expect the moderator to get his point of view and the town clerk, so that, you know, this is truly a multi-layered and multi-party document. That would just be my suggestion, just so that we're not unintentionally offending anybody or causing any hard feelings, that is not our intent, but, you know, respecting all parties and bringing them to the table, however that happens.
Anything else? I'll just say that I was able to quickly review it, but I appreciate, Mr. Berthin, holding this off, because I didn't get to actually read it in-depth or think of any potential changes to it. So definitely support holding it until our August 9th meeting.
We'll make sure it's on the agenda.
All right. Moving on, we have an update on Auburn Housing Authority town-appointed tenant seat.
Yes. I told the board I would get back to you on this and just keep you updated. So the letter that finally did go out to the tenants provided a July 17th deadline for tenants to apply. As of today, the town clerk had only received one application. So based on the new law, the board has 30 days from the deadline that is given by the housing authority for applicants to go to the town clerk's office. The board has 30 days. So your August 9th meeting would work out perfectly, it's within the 30 days. So on your August 9th meeting, we would be putting an item on the agenda for you to vote the tenant-appointed seat. Again, right now, there's only one application. The deadline is five days away. I don't know that we're going to get any more than the one. So I guess I'm asking the board, given that this is all new, would the board still like to interview this candidate, even if you only have the one candidate, and just talk to the, invite the candidate in before making the appointment? In which case, we'll make the agenda item, you know, vote to interview candidates, excuse me, make the agenda item, interview of the candidates, and vote to appoint.
Board members have any preference?
I mean, we set a deadline, so I think we have to kind of live by that deadline, and, you know, obviously, it will depend on the availability of the housing authority, you know, that's another joint meeting that we would have to have, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Through the chair, this one is not a joint appointment. This is a, under the new law, this doesn't follow under Chapter 41, Section 11, like the library board of trustees. This is a new law that was promulgated, specific to housing authorities. And it vested the entire appointing authority in the Board of Selectmen, not in the housing authority. So the Board of Selectmen, it's only your vote, it's not a joint meeting. And under the law, it's required to be taken 30 days after the deadline for submission, and the housing authority did set that deadline. So you don't have to coordinate with the housing authority, but you would want to coordinate with the applicant. And, you know, again, maybe the applicant can call in that evening, even if she couldn't get here, the applicant could call in and you could speak to her.
Through the chair, I think we'd just be overcomplicating if we said, well, if no one applies by the 17th, we just approve, let's just have them come, we'll call in, a hybrid model, and interview them, if we have one or two or five.
One more point, Mr. Chairman, if I could. Through you to the town manager, we're not required to appoint this person, correct? If we find the person unsuitable for whatever reason, could we then reopen the application process at that time, or is the law restrictive in any way?
That's a great question, through the chair. I'm going to double-check that. My understanding is the law is restrictive. You can only appoint someone who's applied. I don't recall seeing in the law that if the person applied, then you don't want that person, that you don't appoint them. I did see in the law that if no one applies, the board can go out and find their own person, the Board of Selectmen can. But you do have an applicant. So that's a great question. I will double-check if there's anything in that law. I just don't remember seeing anything that gave an option not to appoint if you only had one applicant. I know the vote has to be taken within 30 days, which would make me believe that you'd have to go forward with this applicant. But I'll find out, and I can let the board know. But I will let you know, before August 9th, I'll just, I'll let you know, just so you know what would happen on August 9th.
Anything else? Seeing none. For under table items, we have nothing. And Board of Selectmen member items, we have a continued discussion of the September Volunteer Appreciation Event from Mr. Carpenter. At our last meeting, we had discussed potentially forming a subcommittee to look at this again, if that's something the board wanted to pursue. I'll turn it over to Mr. Carpenter to talk a little bit more about it. Oh, yeah. Thank you. And the town manager pointing out that I missed the note in your packets from Darlene Coyle regarding serving food at the event. I remember something, we had talked about new restrictions with COVID, and this alleviates some of those concerns, since we usually do a buffet style. So with that, Mr. Carpenter?
Yeah, I mean, we have a subcommittee now. There were two members. I don't remember who else was on the committee before. I'm happy to do it alone, or if people, you know, I'm certainly happy to have company too. It's, it's a pretty junky event at this point. The food is catered by a local business. So really, the biggest thing is making sure the room's set up, making sure it's, you know, the tables are dressed, you know, decorations, things of that nature. There's usually a agenda, the chair of the board usually does the greeting, and the town manager also joins in that event. And in the last couple of years, we've, we did restrict it to people who have retired in the last year, but with COVID, I would suggest that we look at, you know, two years or beyond, you know, and just get out the invitations as soon as possible, so that the boards and commissions know what day it is, and we can try and get ahead counts.
Through the chair, I could work with you on some potential dates, that I know it's important for you to be available on the board, and we would also work with the town clerk's office on what nights the room is available, try to find a night that you don't have another board or commission meeting, which is always the challenge to find that. So we can work on that over the next couple of weeks. And then we'd have to work with you to also identify all the current board and commission members, as well as those previously. And that, again, that's with the help of the clerk's office.
I think we can do that pretty easily. I do want to point out that cert, I know, I don't think was, I think they were overlooked when Dan and I did it the first time and the second time, so I just want to make sure that we remember to notify them. Any other comments from any board members? Anyone that would like to serve or help with Dan? I guess we don't even really need to establish a formal subcommittee, but we certainly can, anyone that wants to participate.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Berthin?
I agree with you that, I don't know that we need to form a subcommittee, but I think Mr. Carpenter has taken us on the last couple of times and done a good job with it, but I just offer that certainly if he needs any help from me to reach out, and I would think the other board members would be happy to help him as well. So if there's something in particular he needs, maybe reach out to us, and we'll see if we can help him out with that.
Thank you, Mr. Berthin. I'll just throw out that my summer's gotten really busy, so I don't know how much time I'll have, but I know I've helped, at least when I was on the subcommittee, put together the pamphlets, and I can certainly do that again, Mr. Carpenter, if you need, you need help with that. I'll just pick your quote and I'll put them together. I think I still have the template that we used the last time, so. Anything else from any other members?
Same here, Jim. I am really not trying to join any more subcommittees these days, based on what I have on my plate, but if, obviously, if you need any help, just say the word.
Oh, absolutely. We have in the past tried to do it on the fifth Tuesday, fifth Monday of the month, because that, because this room, the selectmen's room, is usually reserved for us, because we're a standing committee, so that's, that's a date that we've tried to use, so if that's of any help.
Through the chair, just looking at the calendar, that is a night of a board meeting. You meet on the 2nd and 4th, even though there are, so in September, there are only four Mondays, and you meet on the 13th and the 27th, and the 27th is the last. So I don't see a five-week month until November. So that's why I think it's going to take a little coordination, because we also have to look at the serving, and who's available from the Health Department to be here for the, for the served safe and all of that type of thing. So if we can maybe work together to try to find some dates, I can work with the clerk and see when the room is available, what nights it's open, and when the critical staff that we need to help, you know, give some support, will be here as well.
We can definitely work outside of the meeting via email to find the right date. I think holding it in September at some time would probably be best, since that's what we've done in the past, but we'll find, we'll find a date that works. Anything else?
Through the chair, can I just add, it's not on the agenda, just, I want to give you good news. Today, we got a letter from Mass. Department of Transportation that we were awarded our Complete Streets Grant in the amount of about $235,000. And it was a real competitive program, so I really want to thank DPW and the engineers down there for putting together a great project. I'll bring you more information, but just the basic summary is, it is the pedestrian bicycle path that we are looking to connect the library to, through the Gaudet Park, to Auburn Street, and make that loop around Brotherton Way. So we're really excited.
Great. Well, congratulations, and congratulations to DPW. We have, do we have the minutes? No, we don't have minutes. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Motion to second by a roll call vote. Ms. Ruthley?
Yes.
Mr. Berthin? Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ren?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you.